Bring that specialist work into the organisation. Stroke, where it was clear from the performance data, the outcome data, that patients received a different level of care on either side. And the idea was how we're going to get the skills so that patients in establishment aren't going to get the highest standard of care. TNO is about how do we improve our elective capacity as I mentioned. Imaging, no hospital confluence with that, the emergency service requires the skills of radiologists for pathways. Those hospitals were struggling to recruit those, depending on the requirements. So in the case of how do we make sure that the organisation can have service across sites? Reel and cancer post-emergent, this is about delivering the best standard of care, improving the recognition of clinicians across the site. And where there was best practice pathways, so across the country, clinicians from neurology departments would get together and say, this is the best way to diagnose three patients. And that often means you need additional resorts that need to be deployed. So what I'm going to do now is just give you a quick overview of where we are with each of those six specialties. So firstly, cardiology. Previously, patients in Burton had to go off to Stoke or Leicester to receive their specialist care. Now that we are one united cardiologist service across the organisation, those patients can receive their treatment close at home in Derby County with a plan in convert size graft. Now, according for Staffordshire population, and what it also means for Derbyshire population is that actually in terms of recruiting cardiologists, we are much more attracted by the proposition, given the size and complexity of work we're doing. So for Derbyshire patients, we've been able to repatriate and that's in fact, we can offer patients a service in Derby where previously they would have to go to Nottingham for pacing and perfusion. So we're now able to deliver that in Derby. And here, this slide was actually written in March 2019, it talks about our recruitment. We've actually been able to successfully recruit two additional cardiologists to the service. And functioning cardiologists have been a very difficult challenge for two separate organisations over the years. Our first goal is to do it as a unified organisation, we've had a good third, we've had a bad third. So cardiologist service, but March 2019 plus going forward, care close at home. In terms of TNO, the big thing here is five year piece of work. And the important thing to stress is that integrating two organisations takes a long time, in terms of systems, pathways, culturally. And so we haven't said that we're going to try and solve all the rules of the world straight away. We've got a five year plan in TNO about increasing the capacity across the two huge sites to be able to do the trauma elective operating, but also to utilise the community hospitals to undertake more outpatient clinics so that patients can have their care closer to where they live. I mentioned earlier on, the key thing for TNO is how do we ensure that we can manage the non-elective trauma lives that spiked during the winter without having to use the capacity that traditionally has been elective capacity. Traditionally, what happens is the lighting time gets longer. So what we've been able to do is do some investment, is we are building towards one of the Burton sites and one of the Derby sites to be able to increase our orthopedic capacity with the sole aim of being able to deliver care more quickly. Orthopedics across the country is the most challenging transformation in time. In terms of stroke, the theme here was around actually centralising the care that patients receive. National policy and evidence shows that patient outcomes are improved when they go to a hypercube stroke unit with specialists managing that service. So the premise of this, and this has been front and centre of the merger, is that patients will come into a unified hypercube service on the Derby site for their immediate care. So that's the first seventy-two doctors. And then thereafter, would have their care either in a community hospital or on the Burton site. But this is purely driven by the clear difference in outcomes if you previously came to Derby or Burton's. So at the moment, this company adapted over to the oversight experience we concede in Staffordshire, and we're going to have public consultation there. The next one, which is all about is reel services. And this is actually an example of work that was happening slightly prior to the nervous world. This is collaboration between two sites. On the Burton site, a smaller site that has general medical physicians, and on the Derby site, specialist reel physicians. And what we've been able to do here is the senior physicians in Derby are working closely with the employees who are in Burton to improve the inpatient care for patients in Staffordshire. Additionally, what we've been able to do is finally for the first, previously Burton would have to get all their services from Birmingham to run the dialysis service outside the metro. We'll be taking that over so that we provide one holistic service for all patients and drive by the organisation. In terms of neurology, what we've been able to do here is deliver increased cancer capacity. So this is about patients, previously if you required prostate surgery, you would be referred to either Birmingham or Derby. And what we've been able to do now is that all patients are referred to Derby. And this is a really good example about how we come together, and that means that we're doing enough of that particular procedure each year to be able to continue doing it. The danger is that as services develop, if you don't do enough of a particular procedure, then you can't continue doing it because all the evidence suggests that the more you do, the better the teams are able to do the best outcome. So again, for all patients in establishment, or established, we'll be getting across the text and we'll serve in Derby. The final one, which is a rule, actually we often look at organisations as a whole thing. This is really about the national health service, national best service. So within my ideology, there's two key themes. One, again, our ability as a new organisation to attract the best that we have. So traditionally, on both sites, we've been struggling, particularly Burton, to recruit two radiologists. We've recently been able to secure through a recruitment process, eight new radiologists coming along in service across all the sites, which is a huge benefit to all of the pathways that we serve. But the other key thing that we're working on is actually joining up all the radiology systems across the organisation. So whether or not we come into a clinic or emergency department any site, the physician can see your latest images up on the computer screen. And more than that, what we've done is we've linked in with the whole of East Midlands. So actually, if you present at Chesterfield or Nottingham, you'll be able to pull up that image in the same way as you could do the same organisation, much better for patients. So I'd stand up in the emergency department, the physician there can instantly pull down my images previously, which air hospitals load it to. So again, it's about national health service working together. And so that is going to be live this year. And we sit as an organisation in the East Midlands and the West Midlands. And so we'll be bringing them both together. So actually, there's the hospitals in the West Midlands and the East Midlands that will be able to access these images in the future. So what's on the horizon, the next six we've been working with, and we've been going at that pace to work with those teams whilst running a twenty-four seven service safely. So we've been undertaking a review with the commissions across the organisation about which are the next six areas that we can really get the benefit for our patients and our staff by focusing on the areas. And that is, these are the areas that have been selected. So I'll talk to you about six clinical areas so far. And what we're going to be working with is the clinicians of ophthalmology, dermatology, gynecology, vascular surgery, physical care, ahead of the net. And this was started in April. So we'll be working with a huge slice of the organisation to look at how the staffing over the new organisation, how the estate over the new organisation, can we put to the best work to serve our patients. Very briefly, to a couple of people, ophthalmology actually will be how we work with our community services so that patients don't need to come up to us, they really need to. How can we accurately manage patient care here in our community? Gynecology is potentially looking at how we reconfigure our cancer services so that they have a visonative elective area that's purely there across the site. Vascular surgery, those similar patients that have been sent to Stoke and to other major centres will be given the choice of having their operation within your organisation now. So these pieces of work are to come, and I'm sure that we'll have representation from the organisation coming in the future, giving you updates on where we are with those. And just to finally say, whilst we're integrating our services, we're also looking to transform our services. So a big piece of work of the organisation's been successful is securing some central government funding to achieve a shorter twenty-two million pounds to develop what's called the Alvis site, so our conversion. And this will be a health version of that, so nursery, chief and surgery, residential accommodation, so that we can look at that, the goal of the project is to help the life alongside the provider. The provider links into social care, health and wellbeing, so how do we manage patients, not purely as a patient, but as a person, how do we work with them to more holistically look after their needs? So this is a very exciting development that over the course of the next few years becomes a tool on behalf of our patients. So this is quite tall really of where we've been. So I'm going to say, any questions?
Can I just ask, get the phones up please, because I'll give you... Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I mean, I'm going to be honest, when you first came to our attention, I was really cynical about it. I was a bit, you made a good presentation in terms of what it appears to be like. I think the stroke is interesting, I mean, it's the distance. And one of the questions I was about transport and how people get to various places because fully transported isn't that easy to find at Tammerhill. I don't know the areas that well, I was in a weather out, but it's not an area and all that. So that must be a major issue for people traveling from one side to the other. I certainly had the idea of a major sense of the stroke and then going to a mobile class, I mean, that's essential in the Norfolk County, people don't know to how much you can talk about this, we've got a specialist service. Also, I think you're right about specialisms. I think it's important that people are able to guarantee they get a good quality of service based on the number of people there. So I think you may point that at something like that. It's a different approach. I mean, in the Norfolk County, community beds are not the flavour, running around getting rid of as many as you can. You're seeing to see a value of community beds. And could you perhaps explain a little more, do they provide a sort of step down facility as well? Whereas, I mean, how does that link in with, because in Derby, Derby is still quite a damage to which far away in Derby, when you've got one CCG which will happen, how are we going to resolve this sort of different philosophy between the South Norfolk County, which sees value, and we certainly saw value in community beds and know that the ceiling is going to be provided away from the people in sort of people's homes. I mean, I'd be interested to see what is on to allow.
Three vocal points. But let's take the final one in terms of the community beds. You're right, we sit within both the Derbyshire group and the Staffordshire group, so we will need to work with commissioners and other partners in terms of the future configuration of beds. The beds are step down beds, so when I'm talking about developing our community services, we currently have step down beds on all three of our sites. And we are particularly looking to develop the elective sites, the outpatient, daycare and hospital side. And at the moment, we would need to work with our partners about the future configuration of beds in the county. But we certainly see the merits of step down beds when the alternative option is an acute bed, and so the patient is stuck in an acute hospital bed, it's not good for the patient and it's not good for the service. So I think whilst we don't know what a future service will look like, we'll be working with partners, it's certainly valuable that we have.
What about the transport?
So in terms of the stroke, that is, in terms of the stroke, that's probably going to be the main, the main issue within public consultation. And it's a balance of demonstrable better patient outcomes by going to the centre, but recognising that challenge. I think that's where we've tried to mitigate some of that by incastrating patients back to a few touch after seventy-two hours. But we do acknowledge that that does put additional pressure on relatives' careless in that immediate seventy-two hour period, which is worked through. The other thing is we're working with the ambulance services. So by moving the hypercube from Burton to Derby, it means that actually we've moved it about ten miles. So the patients in South Staffordshire, actually their closest hospital might be in Birmingham. So they're working with the ambulance service around what that means. So some patients south of Tammerhill in Ridgfield may actually go to the hospital in Birmingham and above. But actually, you're absolutely right, you raised the number one issue really around the transport thing, as a balance really about being able to articulate the benefits to the patients of coming into that specialist service versus that immediate seventy-two hour period where there will be largely increased traffic.
Thank you very much. You've hit a very valid point there, and travelling with the, if you've got a person in hospital down near home, or near home as possible to get to them, is a valid great value point. I'm quite interested, forty-five babies born each day on your mater at units, is that high or low?
Sorry?
Is that high or low? You know, forty-five new babies, your birthday is today.
It's, I don't know if it's high or low, it's proportionally, you know. I guess it's four in each.
Quite surprised at, you know, down at Bath, it's quite a baby a year, that is.
It's quite a baby a year, and actually, they don't cover the nice equal twenty-five person.
So I know, I know, it's a big grandson, so I know.
Well, as I say, it's more quite a general question because obviously going through a proposed change and bringing different organisations together, you've already sort of indicated that that's not the easiest thing in the world to do. I'm glad you've obviously got a top line for it, it seems a sensible one. You presented some very positive things today, which is absolutely great. Have you had many difficulties so far, and what sort of learning have you gone from it?
So I think it would be realistically to say, actually, by bringing two organisations together, it's not a challenge. I think we will be doing quite a lot of work, not just the first year in terms of lessons, lessons learned, and also sticking to one organisation around the country, you know, putting it in some sort of... The merger means different things for different staff groups. So for some staff groups, it has been a whole change. So for instance, the administrative functions have gone from two to one, so there's a process there. For some of our nurses staff, maybe particular walls, the fear of the unknown leading up to the merger was a real concern, actually, what does this merger mean? Is it a merger? Is it acquisition? Is it takeover? And so I think the learning background, you can underestimate the side of this, what does it mean for individual staff? And for those twelve and a half thousand staff, all of them will be in a different place in that journey. And for some, actually, they'll also actually, we'll not really recognise that things are changing much, because we're not one of these clinical specialties apart from the name on the organisation. Actually, I used to work on this board, I still work on this board, it feels very similar. So in terms of learning, some of the big things, I focused here on some of the work on the clinical services, but actually in terms of telepathy, in terms of IT, in terms of some of those mainly things, they're some of the biggest frustrations that start, because you now work on across multiple sites in several specialties. And so it's often those things, those safety things, actually, how do I know I'm secure in my role when I come to the work, and I'm doing the best I can in my operations, that are the bigger things about that piece of work. And as I say, it's, it probably feels very different for different staff groups across the organisation.
And just lastly, on it, from your planning, obviously these changes, as you said, some people have done necessarily understand, and what we've seen in the past is sometimes organisations tend to lose some stuff because of uncertainty, sort of in terms of accelerators, should I say. Have you managed that quite well? Have you kind of...
We've managed it down to the three redundancies, so that possibly. And actually, what we do on a monthly basis is we monitor the number of the different key performance indicators, one of the biggest staff retention vacancies. And what we haven't seen so far is anything out of the norm from the normal season.
So the service has been discontinued on the sort of safety ground during that month?
None of that so far, and none of that in the offing. So I think we've got opportunities, whereas previously, the separate organisations might have ended up having to stop a reserve, actually now we have the opportunity to have it.
Yes, a bear part.
Thank you. First of all, could I just say that thank you for that very clear presentation. I have to say, on this committee, we are at times subjected to, how shall I put it, massive amounts of jargon and management speak that we can't always get our heads around, well certainly not me. But so thank you for that, that's appreciated. You mention in this report that you've secured radiologists from India. You also mentioned that you're going to recruit additional midwives. Are you confident that you're going to be able to actually attract and recruit the staffing that you need to take this forward?
Yes, I think in terms of the radiologists, we have recruited them, so that's kind of the process. So am I confident, in a number of different clinical specialties, the market, I use the word market, but actually, there is not a sufficient number across the country. So we've got to recognise that we're fishing in a small pond in certain specialties. But actually, what we've seen in terms of the attractiveness of the organisation given its size, in terms of cardiology and radiology, the first sort of test bed is extremely positive. But actually, we've got a number of vacancies in our nursing staff, for instance, as we beg us for organisations do, we're constantly out to recruit and go through that process. We can always recruit more, I think that is the answer. But I think in terms of my level of confidence and the level of confidence of the organisation, I think the post-merger, the size of the organisation, makes us a more attractive proposition than the other ones we've been through. But that's not to turn a blind eye to the reality of how many consultants and key specialists are out in the country.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask you one then. I noticed that you've got the increased capacity of winter. How do you manage this winter with the...
It's been a challenge. I think in an ideal world, the merger happens a bit earlier, so a bit more in the evening time. How have we compared to the two previous sort of winter on the proposed sites previously? It's been slightly better, but is that down to the merger or is that down to climactic kind of conditions? This winter's been slightly nicer, we've never been these touch wood yet. So it's, what we have at the moment is literally, as I tried off the Burton site this morning, the wall is being built. An additional wall went into the Derby site in January, so that capacity went in. And when I spoke to my colleague in North Peels, they were able to start operating early initially than they were last year. So last year, they had to stop for about three months because their walls would be used for medical emergencies. So we found it slightly better. If I was taking a scientific view and saying that purely down to the merger, too early to say, but certainly the additional capacity will all come alive for next winter. Talk about a hundred odd beds serving for the year.
Very much. That's a good story, actually. So well done. Any more questions now? That's it, there's a packet, thank you. We're now going to change over now, we're going to get the next bit to set. You've got your hands. It's all done. They've cleared it up. Okay, looks like we've changed over. Thank you very much for attending today. And first, I'm going to say, I wanted to give a start, I did it in public, it's appreciated. I did that in public, it was lovely public. It's good after I've been excluding a bit, and we're meeting, I might have to report for today. First of all, I was going to do the public question pack now, I'll probably go back to that because I don't think the questions are too... So the first question, which I'm not going to start reading them all now, is, you've got it from Mr Mike Jones, you've had your question, you've had your response. Would you like to do something else with Mr Jones?
Yes, of course, I understand that. Thank you for your answer. There are several concerns regarding the new build on Turf Street. Firstly, can you give us some indications, precise indication really, the exact stage at which the planning process is at the moment? And can we please just reiterate exactly which services will be transferred to that
Thank you. I'd just respond to you.
If you would like, if you kind of read me by, or if you kind of...
Yeah, so certainly, some of the questions will be more appropriately answered by Derbyshire Community Healthcare Services Trust. But I'll just check with Helen as to whether there is an issue. We're happy to take that question away.
I don't do it, actually, I believe that.
And you would not. But unless Helen has anything you'd like to say or to call in.
No, certainly, just to say that the services, that's our plan to be moved, were quite clearly set out in the consultation documents, as was, and went through that process a little while ago, so there isn't any planning changes to that. And also DCHS, I work very closely with the council here actually, regarding time scales, very much with the partnership approach, the local authority here and DCHS around the land sale and negotiation and progress around that, but we can certainly get specifics and time scales that would need to come from DCHS around that.
Thank you very much. I did do a bit, I think that was yesterday, I did notice it getting built nicely out, it's up about on to the second level. It's moving. Question number two, question number two is about, actually, if I may turn off for a second, you've got the question, we've had your response, so Miss Christine Jordan.
Yes. It actually follows on to the answers you've just given. You say that there, a factor in any precipitate closure would be building failure, but there is another factor, and it's a factor which we haven't questioned for, and that's the level of safe staffing. Now, at the moment, you mentioned in answer to my question that the complete date has now been moved to 2021/22. This gives a huge amount of uncertainty to the staff who are actually working there at the moment. And like all staff within brains, if they are feeling uncertain or unclear about what their length of contract would be, they would be starting looking for other jobs. Now, I understand that the level of staffing at the moment in the Babington Hospital is getting to the point where things are getting critical. If that happens, as in previous precedent, the previous situation was that the hospital closed with a very short running period. If that is the case, what of what structure or organisation do you put in place to move or support the current services?
That's quite a lot, isn't it?
Well, certainly the detail needed is our expertise, DCHS, we're not aware, they're not plaid particularly towards regarding staffing. So certainly at this point, it's not something which we're envisaging or certainly they're not raising with us. So but if that was to be the case, then obviously we'd have a proper conversation regarding that.
It's not a question of a planning structure, just clarifying, I'm just clarifying, it's not a question of a planned reduction of staff, it's when people say, I need to move, oh, there's an opportunity, it's a short term decision. So you've got to have in place, you have got to have systems which are ready in preparation for such an eventuality.
And that's an operational issue for DCHS, we want to that to be covered.
Question number three, the question is there, the answer is there, I think it's tackling me, if you had a question, you're right.
Thank you.
That's a good one. That's a good one.
I didn't feel that the question was fully answered because the second part of it was what you consider to be essential healthcare services relating to the quote in your report saying that you can't afford to provision all health services at a state level in the future. So you said there's no national definition, but you didn't answer the second part of the question about will there be a cap on any of these when you have to find them? And what I mean by that is you've got five years to be trained. So what is the plan to ration those essential services? Or are you just going to lead it to continuing failing to meet targets, extending waiting lists indefinitely, and all the other ways in which you ration healthcare at the moment?
Chair, so I believe Chair will pick this up in the forms of the reports and discussions, not preempting. I'm presuming that subsequent or whose group in committee meetings in due course will get further and further into the outline of the found the recovery plan.
That's good. Yeah, well, we're all asking here, as you well know. Question four. We've got the question and we've got the response.
Hello, this is acceptable. That's not acceptable.
That question, we've got, can I please clarify?
Just one second, please. Is it not acceptable, this level of answer? The real answer to that, Chris, come on, let's have an answer. And as I've said, I can't read...
I will ask you that question for you.
No doubt, Chair, we'll take it through.
You put it forward to me and I will answer that for you because I asked that question. Question four. The question is there, the answer is there, it's from Mr Pete Benham, is that right?
There clearly are some problems because at the end of the first, the previous question, Chris Clayton points out that it intended five scrutiny committees. But actually, the detail required in those meetings has not been made available. Looking back, Chris, to the previous page, the cat's question, you've given just a very general answer. We're not conserving principles, we want some answers. So in particular, it seems to be the case, there's no planning permission from Derby, or the Derby site. Looking at it carefully, there's no planning permission, it's gone through. General has been applied for, but actually, Emma Valley have not passed through for the Derby site. And you've had a public permission. Now Helen said this is for DCHS. Actually, you should know the answer to this. You're the ones who hold on to the money. I will make the point again, as part of my supplementary, which is that we do need real answers. General principles are not what is needed by now. And I think that that's really, we require more, I think, from this meeting than just general positions. And also, you should know that there's been no planning permission given for Derby Street. This may well not be true. The person who live near Babington have been hearing that that site is not going to go ahead for health provision. And David mentioned having seen things in both, that's actually the county council's work. It started, not with DCHS or CCG. So I think real answers are required at this stage.
So if I may respond on that.
Sorry, put your voice up, please.
So if you recall, when we started the conversation with the public around the opportunity to that site, DCHS is purely happened to fund aid to buy a larger hospital that I've developed for healthcare services on there. So as a commissioner, our responsibility is to commission services. And hence, we have that conversation with the public around what their services could look like and where they might need to be. So our pledge at the time was not to decommission any services from the Babington site until a new site was developed. And that pledge is still very much stand, has then changed to that. In relation to your question four, which I think was the question that you were initially asking, who's related to redundancies? So as far as we're aware, from DCHS, they're not planning any, also redundancies as a result of any change to either the development of those services as outlined in the engagement that we held a year, eighteen, one, two, two years ago. And that staff says, you know, here we'll continue to work under their conditions of concern as far as we're aware.
And planning permission?
Well, planning permission is part of the implementation to move those services. And that's the implementation for that very much, for the operational planning, and that's what we provide with DCHS. So that's part of negotiations, that's part of the negotiations that they're going through.
Oh, right. Planning permission has not been given. So this should have been sorted out maybe some years ago.
Well, we were always very clear as well that we wouldn't have conversations with people about the surrounding areas until there were a number of options available. Had we got full planning, outline permission has been granted.
Yes.
If we'd had, if DCHS, so we'd had full planning permission, then we'd have the risk of being criticised or already making a decision. So it's always very difficult to get that balance between having a real option to talk to the community about without then preempting what that might be. So it's striking that balance between having a real option and then for planning purposes, if they're going through that process, which obviously DCHS has provided or needs to go without then preempting what could be in that conversation of people.
Could you promise to find out more?
Certainly, absolutely, of course.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Actually, I think I was on the planning board at Emma Valley when the outline came in.
Yes.
Actually, I walked out of the room because I was actually county councillor now, I had a declaration interest. I was just worried about, just about this, but I'm not on, I'm not going to board, so it doesn't matter. Right, question number five. That is from Miss Limber, Bruce, I nearly got it wrong, sorry. I know you are, I know she is. You've got your question, you've got your answer, would you like a supplementary?
No, I wasn't aware of the progress given in public at the meeting of CCG. But I will investigate it. I'm not quite sure what a VSPA is.
That's the voluntary, single point of access. And I do recall, I think you came to the board, I think I remember seeing when we met in common a week or so ago, where Zara, which president, gave an update on progress on the voluntary sector. And that would be a matter of thought there.
What does, what does actually mean VSPA?
So that's part of the voluntary sector organisation where they try to coordinate the actions of the various voluntary sector groups. So that you have, as the name implies, single points of access instead of multiple access points. It's very similar to, it's part of what we're bringing together into the infrastructure review. So you've got, with the voluntary sector, as you know, you've got those organisations that actually do the work. And then you've got some what they call the infrastructure organisations, trying to give them some support and connect them. And that's part of that, that's the review work that we're doing.
Thank you. Now I get it now. So you put it down by a bit, well, I get it. Question to the committee chairman himself. And that is from Miss Catherine May.
Thank you, yes. And that's the answer. If you just look two thirds of the way down, it says the committee agreed formally in February that it would undertake an ongoing review of the impact on service users, et cetera. My supplementary question is, what are the terms of reference for that work? Are they accessible to us? What's the schedule and when do you expect to report?
Thank you. I haven't got to come up, sorry. I haven't got to do it yet, yeah?
Uh, well...
I've got to enter there because she's actually, she's done a lot of work, we haven't got to...
The first stage is to undertake some background work to decide who the committee members would benefit most from speaking to, organisations. That has been practically completed on the first stage now. So that will help us develop some terms of reference for the review. So they're not structured yet, but they will be. I would like to think that work will be underway before the next meeting of this committee, which isn't until May. So, but by May, I think there should be some work that the committee will have already undertaken, some, by say, inquiry and a report will be able to be submitted back to the May meeting as a progress report at least. But I think the intention of the members, if I can speak for them, is that this will be an ongoing review throughout the whole of this year and the process in meeting the CCGs and scrutinising the financial recovery plan and its impact. So I hope that...
Yes, thank you. When will we be able to see those two R terms of reference?
As I say, the next formal meeting of the committee isn't until May. Well, the terms of reference, if you want to formally approve them, will be on the 20th of May. So it'll be for the agenda at that time. But I would expect work to have already been undertaken by then. You know, we're not going to wait for the terms of reference.
No, we're going to get on with it, no worries, we're not messing around. Is that all right? Thank you. Okay. Now, another floor letter now, which is from Mr Morris Neville. No, it's Morris. He's waiting behind me. You got your response? What have I hammered before now?
Well, my question was the rest to the committee. And you've given the answer. So my part, first of all, in relation to my question, I'd just like to make the observation that the answer to the last question has a bearing on this. Because what we've just heard for the first time is that the committee clerk has said that there will be this work that you are going to undertake as a committee will include scrutinising the financial plan on a rolling basis, ongoing basis, which is not referred to in the public engagement approach on page six and seven of the letter from Chris Clayton. So that's significant for that role you just presented, you're sort of doing important for us. Page six and seven talks about the process of getting to all these savings that you require to make the department going on a year after year. You've got, in your own timetable, the government body approval of the 2019 twenty quick programme and financial plan by 28th of March. The second section, the section following, says public engagement approach. There is in fact one reference, and one reference only to the word consultation in this. It's all about public engagement. We know committees, because the public engagement doesn't have any teeth. Only consultation has teeth, in terms of perhaps trying to persuade people to stop something happening. There's also no mention of Healthwatch, who played a significant role last year in holding the CCG. So I'd like to think that's not an indication of what's being excluded of this. And lastly, the next meeting of this committee is May. Are we going to be having in May a substantive discussion about proposed cuts? Or are we going to be simply observing something that's already been agreed and is well underway? Because that's what it looks like very possibly to me. This committee is trying its best to undertake its role in overseeing and questioning what's going on in terms of these cuts. But the timetable, as usual, is such, you know, there's references in this document to you already having discussions of all your planned cuts and savings. You're already working on these in various project teams and so on and so forth. So in what realistic sense is this committee going to have any chance of catching up with what you've already done, and it's not even meeting again until May? Just to you, really.
I know, yeah, just to me, so. We can actually have extra meetings, I don't know where we're going to yet, it depends on what happens today. Obviously, one of the questions you brought up was about constitution and scrutiny involvement. And it's actually a question I'm going to put forward to you in a little bit, you're going to get that. And there is actually no mention of scrutiny in the consultation, and I did notice that. And I'm concerned about that. So that is on that, I don't know, I'll pick up. So basically, we are going to hold them to account. We are limited on what we can do, we've only got a certain amount of power. I mean, I push my power to the limit, as you well know, I'd be very good at that. And we're going to try and continue doing that. But the thing about, the thing that I'm worried about, I mean, this year, we have actually managed to get Dr Clayton here early. Last year, it was July, and we were way behind, we were losing that from the start. We're late this year now, in my opinion, but we've got them here. They've actually had an open meeting today, and I'm glad that you could hear it to listen to them. So really, we will do our best as a committee to hold them to account in what powers we've got. Okay, thank you.
I think today, we're worrying in case they're trying to shut the door off the forces...
We're aware of that, we're well aware, thank you, babe, we are well aware of that. Anyway, with that, I think that's done, I think. And that was, I hope you like the new system, it was to try and make sure that questions were, you had your point raised. We were losing questions before, the old system didn't work. So now with that, I would now like to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the item number six, which is Derbyshire CCG's update on the financial recovery plan, 2019 to 2020. Dr Chris Clayton.
Thank you, Chair. So in accordance with the committee's wishes when we were last here, we've come to set out the position with regards to the CCG's finances for the forthcoming year. And in relation to the last answer, it's very important that much earlier start to build the layers of understanding with regards to the financial position, if you may. So today, in front of you, and you've already received, is the outline. It's quite a complex outline, as we know. And I'll take, including obviously, is take any questions either at the end or as we go along, subject to your wishes, Chair.
Thank you.
In terms of the first page of the report, it's important that we set out that context. What we have done is set out a several year view of the NHS CCG's finances and the basis of what's known as the medium term recovery plan. You'll remember, and I've said it in previous meetings, that there are business rules with regards to NHS finances and how we have to operate. And the current business rules stipulate that not only do we need to create a surplus...
We will serve, you just sit down, we don't... I think that actually, if you don't mind.
At your will, Chair. So the CCGs are meant to deliver both a in-year surplus and a recurring surplus of one percent and one percent. And it is our duty to return to that position as soon as possible. So what we've done in table one is just set out the position, and we've gone back to the previous years to give that example. And so at the top, you'll see the year 1718 all the way to 2223, and setting out what recovery would mean. And as you'll see on the top line, you'll see the relative position of the CCGs before any savings occur or before any commissioner sustainability funding is given. So I hope you'll recognise the position from 1819, where we have a £95 million in the year that we're in. But had we done nothing, we would have overspent by £95 million. You'll see in 1920 that the actual figure is 98.5, so that has increased. And just in setting out, I'll go down the column of 1920, just to illustrate how this table works. So you'll see, you'll remember the commissioner sustainability funding, and we talked about £44 million in 1819. That's built up of the £39 million of CSF that we had, and some surplus of £5 million. Well, this year, this coming year, I should say, 1920, we've got commissioner sustainability funding, £29 million agreed with NHS England, which means that we can technically break even next year. But overall, we will remain in deficit. If you have those two figures, you know, if you take the 29 off the 98.5, that shows that we've got a savings plan, a savings target, I should say, of £69.5 million for this forthcoming financial year. I think I went through quite a descriptor last time I was with committee describing how you have your in-year position on your monies, but that you also have what's called an underlying deficit. Because obviously, that deficit doesn't happen in any one particular year, it builds over time. And so the point of the recovery plan is to remove that underlying deficit and return to balance. And you'll see, if you look at that role that says underlying surplus deficit, you'll see that over the time from 1920, where we will end the year with a £41.3 million underlying deficit, by 22... by twenty two, twenty three, with regards to the financial plan, we will return to surplus and, and, and therefore start to hit the the business rules of the N H S. Just interestingly, you'll see the percentages of those, I know, I know we like to talk in percentages, it just gives you a scale of, of what's, what's required. So you'll see in this financial year we're in at the moment, the fifty one million pound saving target is a three point three percent. Sixty nine point five is a four point five percent eh, savings target, which gives you a sense of how eh, significant it is. Just, just to note on the next column, the twenty twenty one, so I know we're talking about next year, if you look at the, the year after, eh, you'll see actually the savings target for the year after is larger and represents a five percent. We've done that on the basis that we won't eh, be able to access commissioner sustainability funding at that time, eh, because we, at this moment, we don't know if that will be the case. We've, we've made that assumption that there won't be any, and therefore, the year after twenty twenty one, you would see a, a higher savings requirement if that, if that's the case. So hopefully you see, right at the bottom, eh, you'll see that our recurring or what we call cumulative surplus deficit, as it is in this current year, starts to improve, and by twenty two, twenty three, you see that we've corrected that eh, over that time scale. So I hope that's a hel- helpful demonstration and actually.
I've got some questions now, I think there's only two ones to ask, I would ask a question.
Yes, sure, I'll stop at that point Chair.
I'll just, if that's just if you don't mind now.
Of course.
My first question, have we got a three year eh, program, a four year program now? And is it going to extend?
But, so through you Chair, so ob- obviously, this is the program that's been set out with N H S England. Um, we talked previously about a eh, three year recovery plan. Eh, in negotiating this particular recovery plan, it's been set over the next four years. Eh, and obviously that would be part of ongoing eh, discussion with N H S England as we go forward. But this is how it's set out at the moment.
They've got a three year, four year again?
Yeah, it's a four, it's a four.
Any more questions on the moment?
Just on, comment on that Chair, I mean, governments always state that the European surplus reduction, or something. I mean, how seriously can we take these figures of the surplus in three, four years? Because I, I certainly, I mean, I don't want to be around in three or four years' time, but the point is the cynical side says it's, oh, on your own position. But I mean, you've got to produce these figures, but I've got to, you've got to take a bit of each of those.
Um, well, through you Chair, um, the committee members' eh, opinion is noted, and, and he, he's welcome to have that. Eh, this is the medium term financial plan as we've set out with N H S England.
Okay, thank you, so we're all done that? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I can't, I can't. Something we are, something we are discussing the same thing, I mean, oh, yes, I must have just got it done, I've already come. We've got financing for this.
So you're looking to, obviously, when we got the three year plan initially, um, it was looking to bring us to that point by the end of the three year plan where we, we had got where the underlying deficit. So when we've changed this, is this a conscious decision that the original three year plan was not achievable?
Eh, I think it's, I think it's more in line with creating a, a proportionate and reasonable eh, plan that sets out ambitious but realistic eh, achievement targets in terms of the amount of savings required. Eh, I think we, we said eh, right at the beginning that a three year recovery, based on where we were, would have been incredibly ambitious. And, and so this does set out a more.
But you would think, looking at the level of saving each year, it would extend the period to make it more manageable, but the level of savings for the previous.
No, so I mean, the, I mean, the truth of the matter is, the, the underlying position is significant. And recovery against that is, is, is also very significant, and so you are right, that, that these remain very significant saving requirements year on year, eh, until, until we, we reach that balanced position.
Not to say, absolutely.
Excuse me, can, can, can we just have the, this, this, you're listening, thank you, thank you. Okay, any more questions from the, from the committee? Go, go ahead.
If that's okay, listen again while we're just on this chart. Um, cumulative surplus drawdown eh, in eighteen nineteen, is this the contingency? I mean, is that something different?
No, it's, it's, it relates particularly to Erwosh and Hardwick C C Gs. And so what happened, we talked about a forty four million pound commissioner sustainability funding. Commissioner Sustainability Funding was only um, in relation to technical guidance, only permissible when you had C C Gs in deficit, and Hardwick and Erwosh eh, were not technically in deficit, or had made previous surpluses that we were, we were able to draw down, which is why we've got that figure of five making the forty one.
Okay, yeah, so with regard to achieving, will you plan to achieve the quarter for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? Um, you did say you've only got to do that with the use of contingency costs. Is that something, bear in mind that we've got a lower control protocol next year? Is that something that will be in a budget, more contingency costs, or will we approach it this year without any contingency?
So every year, you have to set a budget that includes a contingency because of the nature, I mean, it won't be different to council budget setting, where you have to build some contingency factors in, and we will eh, set a budget that has them. And eh, you're absolutely right, in this financial year, we have eh, used our contingency that we haven't had to use elsewhere to eh, assist eh, the savings. Eh, and next year, obviously, if that remains the case, we will use contingencies again if they are not already spent.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, yes, so we're just at the bottom of, of page one, so.
I think I think you do it, sorry about that.
Thanks Chair, so I think it's important, just at the bottom of page one, to reiterate that whilst we are talking about savings, we continue and will continue to spend eh, one point six billion pounds of eh, taxpayers' money um, for N H S services eh, across Derbyshire. And I think in a previous committee, we eh, there was a request to really understand the allocations to Derbyshire so that eh, we could really understand eh, the financial position. And table two, I hope is the answer eh, to that request. So what we've done in table two, we set out the percentages of each of the four C C Gs um, in terms of their allocation target, and I'll explain that in a second. What you, the, just before I do, you'll see from nineteen twenty onwards, eh, we just talk about the Derby and Derbyshire, so we stopped talking about the four on the assumption that the eh, planned merger goes ahead from eh, first of April. So what we've done in this chart eh, is just set out where each of the C C Gs is and has been in relation to targets. So in, in England, we have a system where um, the commissioners have allocated money eh, from the Departments of Health through N H S England, and we have something eh, called fair shares and a target eh, of your allocation. And that's built upon eh, a funding formula eh, that's eh, well known, but sets out several different characteristics into that funding formula, sorts of demographics and so on and so forth. And what each C C G then has is a, an ideal target as to where they should be, and then a distance from the, the target in terms of the actual funding that they receive. And year on year, the intention is that, and this has been an intention for a, a long time, is that every year you move closer towards eh, your target allocation. Because obviously, if you're far from your target, you can't simply move to the target in one year, you have to move towards it. So just showing, if we, if we look, you'll see that actually eh, the four C C Gs, um, excluding Southern Derbyshire C C G, have all been above their target allocation. Um, the most eh, highest eh, away would be North Derbyshire C C G. You'll see that eh, North Derbyshire C C G being six percent above its target allocation, eh, and therefore has, has received more money eh, than eh, would be, would be expected, if that's the right word. And you'll see that overall, in eighteen nineteen, which is the year we're, we're, we're coming to the end of financially now, Derbyshire as a whole, Derby and Derbyshire figure there is three point one eight percent above its target allocation, and, and has therefore received more money eh, than eh, the target eh, would say it should. You'll see, if you look at the, sort of linking this eh, table with the table we've just talked about, you'll see that as we move over the years that follow, eh, Derby and Derbyshire get closer to its funding target, and the percentages eh, get closer to zero as we get towards that target. And so that's, that's part in part why we've got the significant um, changes to the savings plans that you've seen as we actually move towards the target allocation. I hope that's helpful, the sort of descriptor for committee.
Do you have another little question? I wouldn't, I'd answer it also, I know you would.
Eh, this seems more just to clarify something for me on the merger.
Yes.
Because again, um, it suggests that you haven't actually got the permissions, if you like, from N H S England. But just, just like when we've met, I've always thought the merger was going to be complete by April twenty nineteen. So I'm not quite clear where the position is at the moment.
So Helen, Helen's here to eh, to give absolute eh, clarity on that.
Yes, so eh, we're waiting for two eh, legal documents to confirm that. So it's the transfer order and the grant of merger. So on the thirty first of March, four C C Gs will be dissolved. So that dissolution has been um, eh, approved. But until we get it rubber stamped with those two documents, it doesn't become a legal entity until that point. So um, and I know obviously you were at our, our governing body meeting a couple of weeks ago, where I reported back that eh, there's all very positive progress at this, at this stage, there's nothing to suggest that it won't go ahead. But until we get that sign sealed, those two documents, which are a legal document, which then constitute the C C G for the first of April, um, I think it would be a bit remiss to say it's, it's happened or happening. Um, we've been advised from N H S England on Friday, just gone that we should hear from them this week, um, just to eh, fully confirm that. Um, so we hope, hopefully that we'll get that from them some point this week.
Okay, so from a, a governance or an entity sort of status, that's where you are. But I believe at the last meeting, there was actually quite a lot of progress already made in regards to the, of the infrastructure.
Yes.
I mean, so, so where are we at? As I say, it's always seemed like quite an ambitious plan to do that. So how far as we eh, how we're expressed with the infrastructure side of things?
So all of the eh, governing, new governing body roles are being appointed to. So there are thirteen in total, so six G P's, as well as a care doctor. Eh, and the G P's have been drawn from um, various experiences, expertise from different parts of the, the county and the city. There are also six lay members representing different parts of the um, governance. So a layman for audit, a layman for governance, a layman for finance, P P I, et cetera. So those roles have been appointed too. So the governing body is in um, place. The plan's first meeting of that new governing body is April, and we're progressing um, running um, on the basis that the transfer order, the grant of merger will be issued this, this week. Um, we haven't stalled on any of those processes, we've been very much working week by week with N H S England to, to work through where we are. Um, there's nothing to suggest that the merger won't happen. But as I say, until we've got those two legal documents in our hand, then eh, it doesn't become a legal organisation until that point.
Okay, so any savings that are anticipated, because if the future more will come through in twenty eighteen, nineteen?
Yes.
Are we going to see more of the savings in twenty nineteen?
We'll see the full year effect in nineteen twenty, and they are quite significant. Um, there is, and as we've, we've seen, some in eighteen nineteen, as, as you rightly outlined and would expect. But we will see more organisational efficiencies, let's say, from bringing the four organisations together, both through creating a single board, as well as creating single management structures. Um, some um, savings to, to, to buildings and the way that we just run. The organisation will be seen as a full year effect um, for eighteen, for, what am I, nineteen, twenty.
So that's all the problems sort of again. It was, what is the timeline for the full merger to, to say that it would actually be done and it would be completed?
Um, so there's some tidying up that we would need to do in the first quarter of, of nineteen twenty, where we would need to still report the four annual accounts, find the caps, et cetera. Um, so there's some technical stuff that we would, that we, that we have to do, and that's been part of our C F O De- Deborah around, around that, which will take us to around about May, June time. Um, but the, the new organisations, the staff will transfer into T U P at midnight on the thirty first of March, so that will, that will happen. The staff will be lifted and shifted with their terms and conditions, ready for the first of, of April. Um, so, so the, so the, the transactional side of it will, will happen quite, quite quickly. As part of the evidence that we're submitting to N H S England, um, we completed ben- benefits realisation around the benefits of, of, of merging, some of the aren't financial, as we'd expect, some of them are about efficiencies, some are, 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 around working more collaboratively, um, working better as a system with our provider colleagues, et cetera. Um, and, and some of that we'll see over a period of, of time. But we're, we're really clear that we don't have to lose sight of some of that stuff, even in three, six, nine months time. Um, because this is now happening up and down the country, we were told on Friday about seventy one, C C Gs are now going to be merging up and down the country, and they're using some of the eh, the Derbyshire work to help support eh, the thinking around, around that.
The only reason I said that, it's always seemed something that I'm, I'm a little concerned. And we've just had a presentation about the merger of Derby and Burton.
Yes.
And they've got a five year strategy for full implementation. Your view has always seemed very ambitious, quite on the basis of that, thank you.
Any more questions? Got Clayton?
Thank you. No, no, happy eh, happy to follow you Chair in terms of eh, breaking it down, if that's helpful. So um, I hope that that, that split of the allocations and the distance from targets is helpful context, and particularly the context of um, the financial position for Derbyshire eh, as, as it's set out. In terms of the bottom of page two, I think it's helpful, well, I, I hope it's helpful, just to show how that one point six billion pounds is spent on the areas. So you'll see um, the, the, the picture of the Derbyshire pound, as we've called it, um, with half of that money going on at Cube Services, those, so those are our hospital services, eh, either at eh, you know, University Hospitals, Derby, Burton, Chesterfield Royal Hospital, or other eh, hospitals outside of Derbyshire, where obviously our patients eh, do attend. So you see that still approximately half of, of our total budget is spent there. That is not unusual, and not out of line with other areas, eh, and eh, fixed with eh, eh, the cost of running, which are very eh, you know, significant services that occur in our, in our hospitals, eh, such as, you know, complex operations, intensive games, those sorts of things eh, come with a significant cost. In terms of going around, you'll see that we, we spend eh, approximately one hundred and sixty million pounds on mental health services, a similar amount of money on our medicines in our prescribing. Eh, slightly less goes on our general practices. We've talked about community services here in this committee before, and you'll see a similar level of spending on community services as, as with eh, our general practice. And then you'll see a significant area of spend on what's called um, continuing healthcare services eh, for those patients who require ongoing, particularly nursing care eh, in their own homes or community to continue their, their care. And you'll see other areas of spend where, whereas labeled others, there will be lots of. And you'll see other areas of spend where, whereas labelled others, there'll be lots of different budget lines within those. So you sort of see how we apportion the money in that way. Committee's asked me previously about the national funding settlement for the NHS and the five year settlement that's come and the talk of the three point four per cent that I think they all recognise. And so what I've tried to do for you is set that out through table three. And then there's a descriptor on page three of some of the specifics around that. So quite rightly, I've been challenged previously as to set out why we were intending to make the savings that we have been making and have set out to make when the NHS has been granted an increased settlement. And I hope table three sets this out. If you look at, it's slightly different to the way the other tables are set out. The years go down this time, so in the rows we show the years. What's important to show is that the total allocation column on the right shows that year on year, the funding to the NHS does increase and is set out. So our baseline in twenty eighteen, this financial year, just over one point five billion increases to over one point eight billion by twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. And that's set out there. What the table also shows though is some of the information you've seen previously about the distance from targets, that's set out there. It also shows some of the things that we have to spend that money on when it comes. And particularly increasing spending on primary care services, so general practice services, community services, mental health services are set out in the NHS long term plan. And so that money does come with requests of it. When you start to look through the other requests that come from that money. So previously, our hospital trust, for example, have been paid monies directly from NHS Central, centrally, for NHS England. Those money this time from nineteen, twenty going forward come through the CCG. Things like the national pay awards that are matter of public record also now come through the CCG funding and allocations. And the commissioners are expected to pass those through to providers. And so I think it's important to note, the second paragraph down under the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty heading there shows that actually when we undertake all of those allocation conditions, when we apply the growth that's required in certain areas, I set out in the long term plan, actually in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, there's a difference or a, what we're calling a net growth of between naught point two and naught point eight per cent. Which shows, which I hope shows committee why we're having to undertake quite a rigorous savings plan in nineteen, twenty and the years that follow in relation to the allocations that come. As I've set out previously, as with this financial year that we're coming to the end of now, there was the commission sustainability funding that has been, that is going into twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And NHS Derbyshire and Derbyshire, as we've been on then, will receive twenty nine million pounds conditional on making the savings requirements as we've set out and hitting what's known as our control total, which will be a twenty nine million pound deficit position, which is similar to this year, but just obviously less than the four to four million that was available this year. That again fits with the national picture in terms of commission sustainability funding and what's been available for CCGs next year as compared to this year. And so our share in terms of commerce is proportionate to that. Clearly that sets an ambitious savings plan. I've mentioned that before, sixty nine point five million pounds, four point five per cent of our total this year. And the other years are set out there, twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, as I've talked to previously, Chair. So I'll stop at that point.
Yeah, I've got a question for you now.
I thought you might, Chair.
Yeah, no, me. You're going to save sixty nine point five million this year, four point five per cent. Now, you're telling us you're going to save this money, what on?
Yes, certainly. So I'll set out, I'll set out in the sections to call Chair how we break that down and then I'll approach.
I'm going to put you at the end and I wasn't announced to that.
Yes.
Any more questions?
Sure. Comments, Chair? I mean, I was cynical about the first card and I haven't seen cynicism about this one. In fact, by the time twenty twenty three comes, we're three hundred million pound additional funding. And you know, when you hear about talking about massive cuts in terms of what's taking place, what might take place next year. You know, I think, to me, there's an issue there about what will be left to have for that spending of three million pounds. But another point about this, we've just had quite an interesting presentation from Burton, Derby hospitals. And since we're going to be one CCG from April, their view on community hospitals will be very different to what North Derbyshire's view wants. And you should know that I'm very afraid to talk about the cuts that take place in community beds. I would like to see a change in direction in terms of their, they say those beds are valuable. And the North sees it, saw it very differently. Are you going to then relook at how you see community bed? Because we've always said that two to eight are very important in terms of you going from the acute to the, to home. Clearly South Derbyshire and Burton see it in very different lines. And I would hope to have a relook at some of that. Because some of the areas we've got to note, you've got the Alden Sonic, which has been fairly decimated now and a lot of it has been sold up, could be new, very positive with community bed. You've also got the Ash Green Sonic, which, again, I don't know the plans of that, but it's a very purpose built premise and very valuable in terms of what could be used. But I mean, obviously then, I think, although it would be sold for pounds or whatever, but then you've got the place that's still, so can we look towards perhaps a change in view on your perception of community beds, bearing in mind the positive view that we've got from Burton and Derby?
Thank you, Chair. So I wasn't in attendance at that point, so I'm not sure what Derby actually said in the meeting, but I'm sure I...
The presentation was there now, it was a point I think talking about the community bed. It took one page to making the best use of community hospitals in Lethbridge Town and Derby. And again, as I say, there's a difference in perception there. So I'm very interested in how you see the future go down the road.
Yep, I can certainly pick that up. So first, as always is the case, Counselor, you ask, you know, very challenging questions. So if I pick up the first one about the spend, I think, I've not done it in this paper, but I have done it in previous papers where I have showed the level of demand on services versus the resource that's there. Both are rising. So as the table three shows, you're absolutely right, the total allocation to the NHS increases. The challenge, and it's not a new challenge, I've mentioned it before, is that the level of demand on those resources outstrips, if that's the right word, the availability of the resource. That said, we will continue to purchase on behalf of the citizens of Derbyshire a very large amount of healthcare in next year, or just over one point six billion pounds worth of healthcare. So that will continue. We will work towards maintaining the standards that we currently offer in the NHS as per the constitution. And so that will, that will continue. But the reason we have to have savings plans is because of the difference between demand and resource and that separation that's occurred. And again, that's not a new situation, that's been discussed for some time. So there will still be a significant amount of NHS healthcare services that will continue every single day in the years to come. And as you say, the spend for that will increase ultimately. In terms of the community spend, the community beds, so obviously, like I say, I wasn't in the room when Derby presented, but obviously I work very closely with Derby and understand their position. This is also a matter of public record in terms of the types of community beds that are available. I think we've had this conversation with this committee before about this. And the key principle is about having the right type of care for the patients that need it. I think we've talked before about the different ways the beds are set out from what we call pathway one, two and three. And if I may continue, Chair, if I may, with pathway one being caring people's own homes with support, to pathway three beds being those that would be traditional community bed base. And I think what's happened in the North is the programme of work to get the right allocation of bed type. All of those bed types still exist, but it's getting the right numbers in those communities for the need in those communities. And that was the programme in the North of the county. Actually, in the South of the county, we will be wanting to continue to ensure that we have the right numbers of each of those beds. We've done a lot of work over this winter to look at those. There is a difference between North and South in terms of the proportions of the beds in each of those. And again, I think I've said on the record before, that at present we don't have the right proportions of those in terms of the number of what we call P three beds, the community high intensity bed numbers. We have more of those than we think we currently need. But obviously we don't have in the South of the county, the sort of commensurate number of the pathway one, pathway two. And that's what we are working on to achieve. You remember that we took the decision to keep open the Oakston beds, the pathway three beds over this winter period on that basis, but we'll continue to look at it. I don't think our view is any different to Derby's view about wanting to make sure we have the right number of the right beds. And that's what we've worked with them and DCHS and the partners on over the next twelve sort of months as we work that out.
I think, Chair, I mean, it's perhaps not the main focus today, I think, but in service on the top, we're actually visiting the future, particularly on how you'd see the Derby thing going down the road. So I've got to sort of keep an eye on that somewhere too.
Good luck, yeah. I will, any more questions? Carry on, please.
Yeah, so thank you. That takes, section three takes us into the questions you were just asking, Chair, about how are we going to approach what is a substantial savings target? You remember, I think we've had a conversation with this committee before about what we term transactional approaches in terms of contract management versus transformational approaches in terms of redeveloping services, making them more effective and efficient and delivering more in that resource. And what you'll see as we set out last year is that the proportions of each of those will change. So obviously as we go through the medium term financial recovery plan, we will intend to see more of those savings come out from transformational methods or changing the models of them than we've seen previously. And that fits with the length of time it sometimes takes to transform services. Members will know that these things don't happen overnight. And service change does take some time. So that's why you'll see a graded increase in the number of those plans in our recovery plan as the year, as the years, sorry, progress. Not dissimilar to last year, top of page four, we have set out the approach. This will be familiar to committee, so again, optimising value for money, ensuring that our contracts are full value, ensuring that we are not duplicating our funding and paying twice for things. It's obviously a continuing key target for us. Clearly reducing waste, I think we've had a conversation in the committee before, particularly when we think about medicines and reducing medicines waste, which I think we can all recognise that. Looking into what we call unwarranted variation. So variation in healthcare is not unusual, it's not new. But what we want to is promote positive variation where new models start. And when we see positive change, we want to then sort of utilise those. But where we see negative variation and differences in practice that don't benefit, we would obviously want to reduce that. I've mentioned, we were just talking about care models there about the pathway beds. And so we'd be longing to ensure that we had the most appropriate care models working closely. And you'll see there that when we talk about the different community beds as an example of that, that's not just work for the NHS, the commissioners and providers, that's work with social care as well and our local authority partners within that. And then again, we talked about prioritisation of the NHS resource based on effectiveness and policy. And so we'd be wanting to look at national policy and process in relation to setting out areas of savings within that. The committee will be aware, I think, since the last time I was here, I might have my data on, the NHS long term plan has been launched. That's very clear in terms of the long term vision for the NHS. And it particularly sets out how we should increase the funding in certain areas. Mental health is well established there, general practice services also. And there's a new GP contract that's emerging that sets out how we will increase funding into general practice and also community services. And I think the long term plan sets out how the rate of growth in those services will outstrip the rate of growth in the rest of the NHS. So real explicit here and we need to model for that. And when we think about our savings plan, we need to be minded of that commitment. Clearly, the commissions don't work in isolation. We've talked about partnership working in committee before. We talked about increasing the partnership work, particularly local authorities when we're thinking about the voluntary sector review that we are looking forward to working with local authorities on, particularly in relation to infrastructure. But also we've got the rest of the partnership in the joint care Derbyshire system. And so this is something that you'll see, I think, at this committee in the months to come, a more collaborative approach to the whole system savings targets that we will need to make. And I think I'll be bringing with me partners to these meetings in future as we start to come together to address these financial challenges. So it might not be unusual for the committee to see in the months to come, if we were asked to come back, provider organisations coming alongside us to say, I will tackle this together. And that will be a visible difference, I think, for committee. So section four goes into further detail about how we are going to, but I thought you might want to stop me there too.
I wouldn't mind. On section three, reducing duplication and waste. I know I didn't get away with it, so it's not your fault. How much duplication and waste did you have in health service before you came in? Because you reduced a lot last year.
You do.
How much did you have?
So there's always, I mean, the most, I mean, the NHS remains one of the most efficient services, safer services in the world, but still the pursuit of efficiency, you know, is necessary and right. We still believe that there are areas of waste, so we've not fully tackled. Wasted medications, I think, is probably the example that comes to mind most easily. There's still multiple millions of pounds of wasted medicines that are ordered and not used. There's still multiple million of kinds of wasted medicines that are ordered and not used or ordered and not used effectively. And so we would want to ensure that we get that covered. I think we, we've done a lot of work, and I think later on, you'll see in the section on service benefit reviews, we've done a rigorous process internally, we did it last year, it was part of the savings programme last year, and it will remain part of the savings programme this year, where we look at every single contract that we have. That's, that's a significant piece of work based on the amount of money that we have. And we check about how those services, do we get valuable money for each of those? Is that something that has historically been paid for and we no longer need to? So I think as we go forward in that four year recovery plan, I think you still can see our opportunity to get more and more out of that lesson, but it doesn't mean that we won't look. No, 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 no. Yep, certainly. So I'll, I'll go on and say section four Chair sets out the areas that we will start to target. And hopefully you'll see in this year's recovery plan, more of these transformational programmes coming through. So you'll see at the bottom of page four and the top of page five, some key headings as to where we're looking at. So in terms of primary care, which we term, you know, it's general practice, primary care is the broader term for general practice. We are launching a new scheme where we are reviewing the quality of our referrals from general practice. We'll be doing some peer to peer review based on the quality of referrals into, into hospital care to try and bring demand down, make sure that we're using all of the other services that are available before, before we refer. Obviously, those, those referrals that are needed will go through of course, but ensuring that we use appropriate services is a key part. In planned care, you will see in the long term plan, a section about outpatient. That's been highlighted this year by NHS England and the NHS improvements as an area where we really need to focus our attention on. And our own work here would suggest that that fits for Derbyshire as well. So that's where patients are seen in the outpatient department, where they refer to see specialists. And we want to look at not only the first outpatient appointment, but the subsequent ones, particularly looking at the number of follow ups that are required, because evidence would suggest that not as many follow ups are required as occur. And so that is a key, a key piece of development work for us, but also for the NHS as a whole. And as I say, NHS England have particularly picked that one out this year. Just to remind committee, we've done some successful work this year on musculoskeletal medicine, so referrals to orthopedics. And we've set off a piece of work last year that will continue into, into next year around a triage system before, before patients are seen in, in hospital by our specialists, they're triaged and often can see our physiotherapist colleagues. And that is starting to really take, take hold and affect and, and working very well. And we're starting to see the demand for those musculoskeletal, our first outpatient appointments come down as a consequence of that, without patients not, you know, missing out on the care that they need, just seeing that care in a different way. We spend a lot of money on continuing healthcare, so I mentioned that's, that's where patients who have a health need receive care in a community setting, nursing care would be a good example of that. And so we are looking at those packages of care. We've seen that we're spending, planning to spend over a hundred million pounds of our budgets on that area. And so we are ensuring that those packages of care are at the right value and that we get efficiency from that significant spend. And again, similarly, whilst the level of investment into mental health services will, will increase under the mental health minimum investment standard, that doesn't mean we will, that we won't look at all of the services that we do and ensure that we get efficient and effective use out of those, those investments. You remember Chair, that we've talked before about medicines, I've just been talking about waste, but it's not the only thing. We'll be rolling forward that, that programme of the medicines order line that we set up last year, rolling it out across Derbyshire where we, we ensure that only those repeat medications that are actually required are dispensed. But we're also doing a lot of work on, in our hospitals and our communities about appropriate prescribing, getting the most effective treatments. I've mentioned before this thing about biosimilar drugs, where our specialists use very expensive drugs. And actually, there are similar drugs, what are called biosimilars, which are less expensive but do the same work. And so we'll be doing more of that with, with hospital going forward. I mentioned the service benefit review already, and so I'll mention again. But what I will mention are the next two key issues and areas of importance for us. So the evidence is that Derbyshire still has, if you look at our outcomes for Derbyshire, there are areas that we would want to focus on in terms of cardiovascular disease, stroke disease, respiratory disease, kidney disease. And if you look at the evidence and the data, and I think I've mentioned this before, and particularly there's a model called light care that demonstrates this, we've got a lot to do in terms of prevention, picking out those diseases that are preventable or at least the progression of them slowed and increasing the quality of life that patients have who suffer from these long term conditions. And that's going to see, you'll see a big focus, a strategic focus from commissioners and the whole healthcare system in terms of looking at these areas, increasing our uptake of things like blood pressure monitoring, looking at patients who have irregular heartbeats and make sure we pick those up. And to prevent stroke disease is going to be an increasing focus. So actually, although, although we might have a financial reason for looking at some of these things, actually the imperative is improving our, our quality and our outcomes for patients. And by doing that, you can also achieve financial betterment. We've talked before at the committee about the concept of place, and we've got the eight places of Derbyshire established now, out recognised by both Health and local authority and other partners. And so we will be launching this year an enhanced work stream around integrated care, joined up care in those places, and starting to reduce the amount of patients admitted to hospital unnecessarily when, when we create integrated care in the community. And so that's an area where we'll be progressing this year. And of course, like last year, we will be working on our own internal costs. We've talked about that at committee before, and making sure that our management spend is as small as it can be to release as much money for care as possible. And so I'll stop there Chair, no doubt you'll have questions on.
Yeah, regarding the, the long term conditions and disease management, how will you achieve these long term conditions? And how will this affect the care of patients on long, on long term illnesses?
Yeah, so, so there are, there are several long term conditions. And as you know, patients don't, are humans and they don't have one thing or another. They often have a collection of them. So patients who have diabetes may also have heart disease, have blood pressure and so on and so forth. And so we're wanting to target this area now in a very strategic way, to start to look at those areas of prevention. Being in the audience of Dr Public Health, and I think, I'm hoping Dean would corroborate that we are increasing our strategic emphasis between ourselves, public health, local authority and the whole system on targeting these areas. So it is things that we've talked about, so the risk, what we call the risk factors for diseases, you know, they're well known, aren't we? So together we'll want to tackle things like smoking, alcohol intake, those things that we all know, we need to do further work on together. We'll be wanting to, like I say, target things like blood pressure monitoring, picking up diabetes if it occurs early, looking at diet and weight reduction, all of those things that we know, but doing it in a strategic way, doing it in an aligned way across Derbyshire. By coordinating our efforts, working strategically in partnership, we'll be wanting to get a much more coordinated approach. I think that, I mean, not wanting to preempt things Chair, but that would certainly be an area for us to look at together. I think, I think it's found very interesting in terms of what we want to do there.
Well, just a question on the medicines market. I'm apprehensive about using similar drugs. Because I've been in that situation and they're not as effective as the correct drugs and that worries me. So how is that, are you, if you are persuaded, as I put it, to choose a drug, can you then request to go back on the drug you used to? Mine is particularly with rheumatoid arthritis, so they do try and give you supplementary tablets, but we don't know as well as you probably tablets, so.
No, so there's, and there's different levels of this. So obviously, I've got from my general practice background, I've got a lot of experience on the different types of switches of medicines and how you do that. So a few years ago, we did a lot of work on what we call branded medications, where it's a particular brand versus the, what we call the generic prescribing, where the drugs are the same, it's the same drug that's being used. It's that you, you pick the most appropriate price brand of it, because that's an area. And where, where the evidence shows that that's the right thing to do, we must, we must pursue that. In all cases, there are exceptions, because you must allow exceptions where it's clinically appropriate. And we always allow provision for exceptions based on, on clinical basis. So I think, I think we're sure it's there. On the biosimilars, which is again, very, very specialised area of work, that's only where there is evidence that the drugs are as effective. But sometimes, as well, you know, sometimes when, when you change, you know, they often, you know, they, they can sometimes not work as you'd intended them to do, if it's a very individual thing. And again, where there's exception and clinical exception, that would be allowed based on, on the discussion through patient and doctor, that would be, that would continue. But in the majority of cases, it works well.
Mark, okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'll go first, you go first.
Yeah, and what you've said in many ways, if we weren't talking about the cuts programme, I can see a lot of logic in what you're talking about. I mean, when you talk about triaging and putting necessary attendance hours, putting getting other people, other staff to deal with a complaint about the G P or doctor. I totally agree with you. I mean, I can't help that, I can't help the idea of using alternative group. But, but I think in a sense, this section is where, very much where we are in terms of looking at the impact of what we could be taking place. I think a lot of these items will be based, will lead to areas where we want to talk to people on the ground. I talked about, we've talked about continuing healthcare before. It's an area that is very costly, but for people who get it, it's very important. And I know there's big pushes to sort of reuse those, and we don't have a anecdote story of people not getting it. And that's the sort of thing that's very, very easy to get bogged down. But I agree with you in many ways, looking very efficiently. But again, I think if we can talk to groups and individuals, well, not just individuals, but certain people involved in passing these services, we'll get a much better feel where the cuts are to have an impact. But in many ways, in other bits, I agree, when you talk about long term conditions, I know the work that's there, the work with public health to achieve that, completely agree with that. It's, it's the emphasis on, my obsession to map cuts all the time, that you tend to detract from the fact there is a lot of, as you said earlier, there's one one point six million, billion pounds of spending and it is still a large budget, but it's how we deal with the individuals. At the bottom line, it's the individual who potentially suffers, and I think that's where I'm coming from. So you almost said we'll be talking about this in the future. I think that's where this report in itself is not over helpful. It spells out broad principles. And again, this is where we have this ongoing difference of what you feel the committee is entitled to question and what you feel is our role. And again, well, no, I probably totally agree on that. But I think what I've realised is our interest is very in front of both getting to the detail and getting to realise the impact of these cuts on, on the people of Derbyshire, which in the end, we're serving and you're serving. And so again, I think I'm repeating myself, but this is the bit that we'll need to look at in some detail and hopefully you'll come forward with more detail. What you're talking about, if you're going to redesign services, let us have that information so we can say, this is what the redesigned service looks like, rather than us having to say, this is another cut. It's always the same cut, but look at it in a positive way, for the sake of trying to talk to groups and people involved in these services to get a feel of where the impact is going. Thank you.
Right now, my question. You've got on the mental health thing, I couldn't hear this up. Improvement of post idioistic sports dementia, the better project. Now dementia is chuggling on your biggest cost, but when people being, I mean, obviously getting older, they're being with dementia. How, how do you work that?
Yeah, so, I mean, you're right. So the, the, the direct spend on mental health, as you've seen, is significant. The indirect spend in relation to mental health, including dementia, is probably understated. And so it's really important that we do look at the model of care for dementia services for memory assessment and make sure that we've got the most appropriate service that we have. So, so we will be wanting to look at that in collaboration with the mental health trust team, which does the majority of the specialist care in that, in that arena. You're, you're right to say that dementia, obviously, as we, as we all grow older, is becoming an increasing, it's a consequence of that, as the types of conditions that as a society we suffer from changes. So we've made massive strides in terms of preventing cardiovascular disease, heart attacks that take people's lives. And, and people now live with those conditions more than they, than they used to die from them. And as a consequence, conditions like dementia become more apparent and, and as we, as we age. And so we are going to have to look at that area. I'm happy to, obviously, as the control admin says, the next reports will show how we start to look at these areas.
I'll put it like, if you'd like, please, if you'd like, okay. The final thing on mental health, now we had a lot of trouble last year with this, I can never say, psycho dynamic psychotherapy thing, which we're going to withdraw funds from. Are you going to withdraw funds from that? Because obviously, you still didn't save the money.
No, so if, if, I'm just, just going from memory. I think the last time I spoke to committee, we were at consultation about psycho dynamic psychotherapy. Based on the feedback that we had from a broad range of sources, we stopped that consultation. I think, just from memory, I think we stopped that in December time. And our view was, instead of looking, I think it's a shared view by many of the people that we spoke to, we're dealing specialists, instead of looking at a very, you know, narrow area of psychological therapy, we would broaden the review to look at all the psychological therapies available and make sure that we were getting the, the best, I think they call it menu of, of psychological therapies. We're currently working with mental health trust and other colleagues to inform what, whether a new consultation would look like, a new piece of engagement, and we'll bring that to governing bodies in due course. I'll just check these hours, but they're not paid for me.
So we're currently just finalising the terms of reference for the review. The very much intention is obviously, given the history behind it, also want them to be able to move forwards with this plan. And we're also doing that review in a year. And in terms of finalising those, we just need to do that in cooperation with the mental health trust, not with state office ground. That's one of the references we didn't care about, but obviously, it's a six month, exactly, as well.
Okay, that's a fair point.
Thank you Chair. There's a lot in this report about general principles. I do think that probably the members of the public have attempted upon themselves to take a huge interest in what's gone to happen to their health service and our health service. interest in what's going to happen to their health service and our health service. Really, we're interested in the details when it comes to it. And the last 10 minutes, really, what you've said, for me, has been the most important. I realise you've got to do all these targets and final triccons, summaries, but we want to know, I certainly want to know, what the outcomes are going to be, and what some of these services are going to look like in the future. For instance, on, what we're on page, we're talking about transformation of outpatient services. We want to know what that actually means and what it will be like if you are an outpatient. If I could just also ask, at the same time, under mental health, why personality disorder pathways specifically mentioned? There are a whole host of mental health issues and diagnosis. Why that one? Can you tell me what embedded parity esteem actually means? I've got no idea.
Yeah, so I'll break some of that down. So I think, in line with what we agreed last time, we need to build the foundations of the understanding. So I'm hoping that committee now understands the what of the financial recovery in terms of the numbers, scale, timescales to turn that around. And in subsequent meetings, we can start to come back with more information on how it's going to be done, and exactly the point you've just raised. That would be helpful from my perspective, because when we were going through it last year, we were trying to do both all the time, you know, talking about the scale of the challenge, did we agree or disagree, and also what we were going to do within that and how. Whereas I'm hoping now, because we're earlier, you know, than we were in July last year, we've set down the foundations of the main, talked more and more about how it's going to be achieved. In terms of those very, very specific areas, so it's fair to say that within the arena of mental health, there are lots of areas that we know are important to patients and practitioners alike. We know that there are areas where there are significant cost implications by not having as effective services in place that we would like. And certainly from the commissioner and mental doctors' perspective, we would want to focus on personality disorders more than we have previously done historically, as we understand more and more about those conditions and the best ways to treat them. And that's why I think we've possibly singled it out in this way, because it's been an area that hasn't had as much attention on it as previous, you know, in previous years. And we recognise now that, you know, we want to. Parity of esteem is a phrase that came in into being over the last few years, where it starts to say that mental health and wellbeing is as important as physical health and wellbeing. Whereas I think it's fair to say, historically, the NHS is, if you look at just how we've spent money, it's focused more on physical health than mental health. And now we're saying, actually, there's an importance of equality there. And that's where parity of esteem comes from. It's the national phrase for that. That helps. Thank you.
One question, I'm quite passionate about the mental health side, because I don't think it's great as it is. And what worries me is in case it deteriorates worse. Now, a question I want to ask you, it's about, actually, it's from one of my lecturers. They have a mental health issue, but they've gone to the doctors a few times, but they never refer to a psychiatrist. Now, from what I'm told, they may, I may be wrong. Is it possible for your local GP to refer people with mental health issues to a psychiatrist?
Right. So psychiatry, like any other specialty, is referable by general practice. So, you know, the GP, the doctor there may refer on to a specialist mental health doctor, the psychiatrist, for advice, particularly in relation to a newly-forming illness or medication requirements. And that's standard practice. The field of mental health, though, is quite different to some of the other physical specialties that we have, where there are a broad range of practitioners that you can refer to. Some of those referral routes need a general practitioner to do it, some do. So usually seeing a psychiatrist in a non-urgent way, would go through general practice, and be referred on to the mental health services. But you can also refer on to other practitioners within the mental health teams. Some of those routes, you don't actually need referral to go into, and you can have self-access to some of those routes now. And that's becoming more and more sort of widespread, really, as we try and help support conditions before they become a more significant problem. And that's why these, we've talked before in another area of NHS language, what we talk about IAPs quite a lot, you've heard that phrase, no doubt, before. And that just stands for increasing access to psychological therapies. And what we're trying to say is that actually, before things become a significant problem, to increase patients' access earlier for those. And so, obviously, not understanding the nature of the question, but the answer is yes, general practice can refer, yeah. Before we go on to the next section, it was a case of, we've looked through some of the mechanisms before, when you actually started selecting schemes, and you had a method of carrying out quality impact assessments. Now, that was something that was talked about in my Bridget's article before, but I believe there's change happening on that system as well. Could you just go and look at the changes that were... Yes, so Bridget obviously has brought a new level of expertise and view with regards to the quality assessment processes that we undertake. And you're absolutely right, set out previously as to how we've gone through those processes. And Bridget has set out, I think, I've looked at her, and I think you've set out in the other body, the approach to quality impact assessments. Obviously wanting to do those much earlier in the processes, and have the ownership of those.